The next item is. The next item is persons wishing to address the board. Did anyone come in afterwards that wanted to address the board that didn't get to sign in? And if you're just observing, you don't have to sign in, so. Okay. So I do want to. I'll just pull over briefly here. I don't really have it with me. So, the public participation at board meetings rules. By the way, I appreciate everyone being here and wish that we had this much participation in all of our meetings. This is great. We would just move it to a different location. But the board recognizes and respects the input which may be provided by the public on school matters. You have the express right and are encouraged to attend all school board meetings. The school board meeting is open to the public and members of the public may present, observe, and listen to the school board conduct its business. They can speak during the meeting consistent with this policy. We do have a public hearing portion of this meeting, which is on the construction manager at risk. And at that time, the comments will be limited just to that particular topic. So, really, as long as you have general decorum, which I'm sure everyone will. Each person gets five minutes to speak on a topic. And I'll just go down the list since I have a number of people signed up, but Mary, you're first. Where's yours?
I'm talking about things to consider regarding placing the athletic complex east of the houses on Allen Avenue. The location being considered is in a partial flood plain. The cost of dirt work will be phenomenal and the final result is no guarantee that a heavy rain won't be an issue. There's simply not enough room for an athletic complex at that location. We're limited in space for track teams setting up tents. We'll have to share the stands with opposing football teams. It wasn't that long ago that the girls softball was added to our sports lineup. Just how difficult was it to have the games at the site north of town? What if we want to add a soccer field? We have to be thinking decades down the road. The mosquito population near a slew is high and dangerous. There's a species that'll transmit the West Nile virus that lays eggs in standing bodies like stockpots and slews. And I know from experience just how bad it can get in my own backyard. Parking is already an issue on Allen Avenue. This is probably the number one thing. And the situation will only become worse with an entrance to some of the parking directly off Highway 34. One of the busiest highways in South Dakota. Highway 34 is busy anyway and will become extra busy prior to and after football games and track events. The overflow in our current parking lot will make it almost impossible to keep people from taking a shortcut through the lawns of the 11 homes along the new complex, one of which is mine. It's a misdemeanor to trespass on private property, but who will police that? Who's responsible for the liability insurance should someone get hurt crossing our properties? Even if people would comply to using the proposed pathways, many people will be trying to cross Allen Avenue the same time people are trying to park. Trash will be another big problem for all the homes across from the complex. And well, it's already a problem and it's likely going to get worse. I know Larry and Janelle Steph and I talked to them, they're going to lose the easy access to the entrance to their side garage. Property values will be negatively affected. And is the cumulative decrease in the value of our homes worth the possible savings in purchasing this land versus purchasing land someplace else? I recently talked to two of the board members. And they both indicated that even if we do build a new athletic complex, the location has not been determined. I'm wondering why do we have agenda number 15, approval of the land purchase agreement? Do we intend on buying the land even if it's not planned for the future athletic complex? I don't know if you're allowed to answer questions at this point, but.
It's at the discretion of all answering questions, so typically we don't interact. And this is just your time to give your thoughts and concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, I believe Dan Schmidt.
Good evening, I'm Dan Schmidt and a lifelong resident of Coleman. I want to be clear from the start, I am not against building a new sports complex. What I am against is building this in the proposed east location. I'm here tonight because I believe that you are not listening to the very real concerns that members of our community have been raising. There are multiple reasons why it should not be built there. And most of these have already been discussed, but totally ignored, like the last meeting and Mary just talked about several concerns again. The main reason is that we would end up with two landlocked school locations with a row of houses through the middle. Access to this proposed location would be extremely limited. Right now, there's going to be one spot to get there except coming off of the highway. Also think about the residents that currently live on Allen Avenue. Who will have a huge increase in traffic through their yards, a view of the backside of bleachers, a fence, and a retaining wall. We have several other locations available that would give us much more flexibility, room to grow, and better serve our community. Not just today, but for decades to come. The number of residents that signed the petition and speaking out should tell you something. And frankly, I've yet to hear a compelling argument for why it must go in this east location. Also, what is the big rush to get this pushed through? Do we have a deadline on getting this thing done? But this isn't just about the location. This entire process has lacked transparency. The survey that went out was very skewed and misleading. If multiple locations were truly being considered, why was there only one drawing included that only showed this east location? It also shows the bleachers and crow's nest on the east side, which we already know is not going to happen. This is not how you gather honest community input. This was nothing more than an attempt to guide people toward a predetermined decision. Our community deserves better than this, especially when you're talking about spending four and a half million dollars. The people funding this should also have a say in it. If we want to do this properly, let's listen to the voice of the entire community and not just a select few. Put it to a community vote to first see if the majority even wants a new sports complex. Or could this money be spent more wisely for education? If the answer is yes, let's take it to a vote on the location then. I believe you will get a very different answer than the skewed survey showing. If you do the right thing, you'll have a project with genuine community support behind it. Not division and resentment that is currently happening. I want to ask those of you that are attempting to push this vote through to think beyond the short term. Will you be happy with this decision in 10 years, 20 years, maybe even 50 years down the road? I'm asking you to stop this process now, listen to the voices of the entire community, not just a select few. And let's do this the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Mike, we have you next.
Mine's pretty short. Mike Gamler. Well, I believe the board has the best intentions for the school. I just want to point out that decisions made today by this board opens the door for future boards to slowly eat away at our neighborhood to a point that it will no longer exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
A survey for the athletic complex went out on September 23rd and was completed two weeks later. The only question of note was, do you support the plan to build a new outdoor complex? The possible answers were yes, no, and no, need more information. Slightly above this question was a very brief cost breakdown between four and five million dollars. So that puts the cost per question regarding the actual complex at four or five million dollars. Why was there no yes, but I'd like more information option? That would be a category that field would have given a much better result if you were only to ask one question. Under the accompanying picture, there's asterisks saying conceptual design, not a final plan. This would lead people, me included, to assume more information was to come. All I've been able to piece together is purely rumor and speculation. At last month's meeting, the board decided to move forward with purchasing property without any public input. This was the only bit of information that we can definitively say is true. This seems like a step in the wrong direction if absolutely no information or feedback about the complex has been shared with the public. Originally, I did not vote for the complex, but I would not have stood in the way of it. Since we have a small community and district, I wouldn't think it would be too difficult to pass on information about it as it became available. It seems if the board is operating under their own agenda, known only to them. The homeowners along the assumed site were never contacted about their consideration or input, or even if they were going to listen to it. I'm sure they would have appreciated being included as a show of good faith. It is possible to do the right thing wrong. How you get there is by not considering any public input farther than a broad yes or no. The people I've talked to often who prefer the new field to go out north of town. This was possibly in the planning for the prior school addition and has never been talked about or referenced since. To the board, this could be a great opportunity to show you care about your community. Where transparency and openness lead to more desirable outcomes for the taxpayer, self-aggrandizing and secretive behavior will only lead to the opposite. You may keep your seats of power, but we'll have them at the cost of respecting your neighbors. This could be something that unifies our community and pride, but I fear it may only lead to anger and animosity towards yourselves. You are elected representatives and as such must consider the representative. Thank you.
Bart.
Hi, Bart Sample. Full disclosure, I do not own property in this district, so I am not a taxpayer in this district. I do have two kids who attend this school and I am an employee of the district, but I don't have a dog in this fight. What I would like to be, I am asking to be able to represent all of you guys in the state legislature next year. And so what I would like to do is facilitate a bridge between the landowners and the board. And I've got some thoughts for the board, and that is, one, transparency. The more information these folks have, the quicker you're going to get them on your side. Secondly, it's real easy to spend other people's money. But at the end of the day, it's their money and you need to listen to what they have to say. And really weigh that and take that into consideration. And third, you're the board of education, not the board of athletics. And education needs to be the primary focus. There's a lot of great things that go with athletics, don't get me wrong, I'm not undermining that at all. It does teach them teamwork and skills that they're going to need whenever they enter the workforce. And I support that wholeheartedly. I mean, my students are athletes, so. But to the landowners, we live in a representative government. Not every project can be done by popular vote. In fact, if every time the board was going to spend money, it had to go to a popular vote, nothing would ever get done. And so you have to trust these folks, that they have your best interest at heart. That they're not trying to conspire against you because they have a thankless job. They have the hardest elected position, I think, in government. But at the end of the day, they have to be able to do contracts, do negotiations, and stuff like that. That's not necessarily public knowledge. Because just like you guys wouldn't go out and buy a piece of property and then have that, while you're negotiating with them, have that number out in the world. Because it's just going to drive up your cost when you do that. And that's why the state gives them some leeway, and I believe it's a percentage of the value of the land in the district that they can spend to see if the project is feasible or even if they can afford it. So it's just some things to take into consideration, but if I can in any way facilitate trying to bring the two sides together, I will be more than glad to do that. Thank you.
Sean.
I'm Sean Dagley. I'm a new resident to Coleman. We've been here for about two years now. I was at the last board meeting, spoke in favor of it. I'm still in favor of it. You know, some of the benefits I see, I've been coaching for a long time, been in education for a long time. The new complex would be a benefit to the athletes. And at the last meeting, I talked about some of them. Again, I just want to highlight, you know. They said there were 60-some kids out for track last year. I think having a track facility would take away some of the safety concerns of where the athletes practice now. For some of those athletes that don't have the ability to practice hurdles on a track or handoff relays on curves or things like that, it's a great opportunity to build like that. You know, I've only been here a little bit, but I've talked to some residents about tradition and the 80-yard football field is such a great thing. I grew up in a small town in Palm, South Dakota, probably no bigger than Coleman. So I completely understand the tradition. If we build this new big complex, will that tradition go away because you don't get to use a football field that's been here for so long? But I've told the people I've talked to, tradition isn't just your football field, it's the kids, it's the fans, it's the parents that all come to the game. And I don't think you lose that building a new facility. I think that stays there as you're knit in the community when this, if this would go forward and get built. I did make a note because I know in coaching, I think when this school was first here, you only had one gym. I'm sure when the second one was added, some of the same concerns were brought up. Do we have the money? Do we need the second gym? Well, now, I've only been here two years, but I know from my boys playing basketball right now in elementary school, that second gym is booked all the time now. And I, it's an outdoor sport and I know it'd be a little different when you have an outside athletic facility. But I think the track, the football field would get used more and more. There's the elementary football program coming up. Maybe soccer, maybe girls flag football. Flag football is huge. My boys are into it. So you never know in the future, we are talking about the future. You never know what benefits 30 years down the road you have for sure. But I think adding this to the community would be a great thing. And the other thing, I completely agree with, education should come first and the school board should consider the education. But unfortunately, being a coach and teacher, I would tell you, in my opinion, 50 to 60% of the people that are looking at maybe going to a different school district are considering athletic facilities. Traveling sports are unbelievably huge. And I don't think it's right that that's the first thing that some parents consider when they look into a school district if they want to go somewhere. But building a complex like this, I think, would enhance people to maybe come to Coleman. You have kids from other districts right around that maybe would come here. And every time a student comes in, the school's gaining money from that student coming here. It's not going to offset the cost of a 4.5 million or 3.5 million complex. But it's going to bring the school money as those students come here to the school. The last thing I was going to say, and I said at the last board meeting, I again echo some of the other concerns. I hope the board considers both sites. I said last time, I think it would be a great addition to the site out north where you have those softball fields and baseball fields already. But again, the board has to make the best decision. And I think building the complex is going to be a positive for the community. Even though I've only been here a couple of years, but I've seen other schools do it and I really think it's a positive for those communities.
Thank you, Sean. Did I miss anybody that wanted to speak? No. Okay. I appreciate everybody's input and thank you all for being here. The next item on the agenda is our disclosures. I did receive an email from Laura Zortz last Wednesday saying that we believe, I don't know who "we" is, but we believe it is appropriate for me to recuse myself from any athletic complex voting as I have a conflict of interest in the matter. Because one of the proposed sites is essentially in my backyard, I am directly affected and could have financial gain from it. If the complex is placed on the east site, it is not in my backyard. If it is placed to the north site, I could have my property taxes lowered if my assessment declined. There's no other board member that has property bordering the proposed sites and she expected this to be addressed, so I will address this. I spoke with our attorney and gave him kind of this scenario. Not everybody here knows where I live. I do live on the north side of town. Just, most of the board member knows where I live, but in my backyard, there is a set of empty lots for development. And then there is a road right of way. And then there is a hill, and then there is a slew. And then if you go to the west, my words to the west, to the west, there's another set of lots for development and another road right of way. And then that, to the north of that, be where the complex would be. So to say that my property borders it is not true. To say that it's in my backyard is probably a stretch. Either way, we felt it would be appropriate to go through the, basically, the three separate qualified law, 323-2, which goes through the circumstances under which a board member would have a direct benefit from a contract and would be disqualified from voting. So if a board member is a party to or an intended beneficiary of the contract, if the board member has more than a 5% ownership in an entity that is a party to the contract, if the board member acquires property under the contract, or if the board member will receive from the contracting party compensation, commission, promotion, or other monetary benefit that is directly attributable to the contract. I went through those factors and none of those apply. If you go to STCL 6117, that prohibits a school member from discussing or voting on an issue if there's a conflict of interest. And each board member is tasked with deciding if they feel they have a conflict. Going through the factors, I believe that I have a conflict. If any board member disagrees, we can have a vote on it and I would be open to do that. So I would ask you guys if you think that I have a conflict on this issue for a future vote. Then I would consider that addressed. Next item is to approve the agenda as presented or amended. Is there any changes to the agenda schedule? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, aye? Close case? If you can. Mr. Johnson, floor report.
All right. Our November attendance was 97.46%, so pretty good attendance for November. Time is flying, it's already December. Winter sports are starting to get going. We've already had wrestling meets, junior high basketball tonight, varsity basketball starting this week. Last weekend, Orland Turp took a group of students to the state competition in Watertown and they did amazingly well. They earned the team excellence award. All four students scored superior for Orland Turp, so that was great. Last Wednesday, we had the elementary concert. I think we might have set a new record for concert attendance. We had to make copies of programs twice because we ran out. Kids did a great job. Mrs. Olson did a great job. This Thursday, the 7 through 12 concert will be in the gym at 7 o'clock. This week on Wednesday, we have Mr. Stolken coming to talk to all the students. He's going over the wave goodbye to school violence program from the Midwest Center for School Safety. So they're going to meet with, I don't know, high school, middle school, and then with elementary, K through 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And then Wednesday night at 6 o'clock, he's going to have an assembly for parents, grandparents, community members, whoever, to learn more about what kids are going through in school and bullying issues, safety issues, all of that. And I think it should be a great thing. It's December, it's time of year where some people are going through tough times, so hopefully that'll be good. Only have nine days left in the first semester. We have semester tests on December 18th and 19th. We'll dismiss at 2 o'clock both those days. That's probably about it right now.
Any questions for Jesse?
Mr. S is this week or next week?
This week.
This week.
Wednesday. Yeah. This one's. Yeah. This Wednesday and the council the next day. Busy week.
Any other questions? Great, thank you. Wayne.
With the new changes of the rules for the election, for school board elections, we will decide what day we're going to have the election. On today's, our tonight's meeting. And then two publications are going to be going out, one this Wednesday and one next Wednesday for the open seats that are available during this election. And the two seats are Bowen and Keys. And then the only thing I have is, we're finishing up the audit, which will be done here probably in the next month.
Any questions from the Wayne? School reports. Anne? Jen?
I have two. I went to the ASBSD delegate assembly in Pierre. It was a 45-minute meeting. Everything passed as written. The only thing that there was even any discussion in was striking the resolution for funding for career and technical education and rolling that into another resolution. And it was the Brookings School District that got up and spoke to it because the large districts generally get funding specifically for CTE where Associated School Boards isn't necessarily saying that we don't want that funding. It's just rolling it into another resolution. So that did pass, pretty split vote. Smaller schools voted for it, larger schools voted against it. But it really didn't change anything one way or the other. And then I did the PLEC meeting. So Flandre has filed a petition to withdraw from PLEC for the 26, 27 school year. And they have made that a final decision. Two other districts. Mr. Stolken's sitting over there and I can't remember which districts they were because I didn't write it down. Yeah, a couple that contemplated and voiced that they were thinking about it. So we've got to decide. And we'll be voting on that, I believe, in January. Because PLEC needs to know before February 15th if we intend to continue with PLEC or if we vote to dissolve PLEC. And I believe all of the member schools are talking at the superintendent's meeting and will make a unified decision. Do I have all that right?
For the most part, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. What else? Really, the only thing that I want to say, a lot of mine is in here already. But I had a number of people reach out to me this last month just to clarify and get questions answered. And I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that rather than just not knowing or assuming or anything like that. I feel like they were great conversations. I just wish more people would do that. So, myself and Scott are open, our board members are open. If we don't know the answer to your question, we can usually find someone who does, so. Scott, I will turn it over to you, Scott, and you might have a, might have to interrupt your report.
As Jen talked about before, we'll have our PLEC meetings, the superintendents on Friday. There is discussion as far as what to do with PLEC, as far as the dissolving and/or as more schools get out of it. We'll discuss that more on Friday. On Wednesday, Dr. Donovan DeBoer, the superintendent at Del Rapids, has lined up state legislators to meet with area superintendents. I think there's five or six superintendents going to go, so that is Wednesday morning, so I will attend that. Kind of, I would say it's a round table, it could be, but, so I will be out of the building meeting with them. Very entertaining, again, looking at adding a band music para. We've had it advertised before. We have, nothing is finalized, but we have someone that will graduate with a band music degree from college Christmas time and we're looking to add them into the program a few days a week. Kind of as a trial basis to do that, so if someone says there's someone new in there, that's what that's about. And then I guess the last project I'm looking at is the old gym. We are looking at replacing the lighting in there. The lighting itself, I don't know exactly how many bulbs we replace nearly, but I am trying to get some bids on replacing that with either LED lights or better lighting options, so. As I get information on that, I'll share that with you as far as costs and what that can be, so. I think that's all I have for now.
Oh, great, if we could get a vocal band music para. The band music para is a hard position. Any questions for Scott? Okay. It is 6:30, so we will move to the item 10, which is the public hearing utilizing the construction manager at risk. And Scott, can you go over that just a little bit?
Okay, so the construction manager at risk is different from the project we did with the addition where we had a design build, sure to build. Talking to other superintendents. Talking to other superintendents, schools utilize the construction manager at risk. In their opinion, it gives local contractors the greatest ability to take part in the project. There's more flexibility in how they bid things and break down bids. So that's the main deal with construction manager at risk. The reason, if you look at it, there is... Take action to advertise for that. The reason that that, we did that at the last meeting is because we never had a resolution to do it. Rodney said we could do it, but he would recommend that we re-advertise and establish a way for receiving the proposals. So that's why that's up again. So anyway, the resolution's in your packet. The state just says, you know, you have to have a resolution to go the CMAR route, so...
This time, I would open it up to anyone who would like to speak on the construction manager at risk.
I would like to talk.
Yep.
So regarding the construction manager at risk, aren't we putting the horse ahead of the cart? The community doesn't necessarily support the project at all. They don't necessarily, if they do support it, they don't necessarily want it next to the slough. So consequently, we don't support selecting a construction manager at this time. Are we, why are we moving forward when the community doesn't have buy-in? What's the rush? What's the urgency? Can't we wait till the families of this school district have had a chance to vote on it?
I guess a little bit to that is, and I think part of the reason that there's, whatever word you want to use, the board has not come up with a plan for attracting football field. So when people say it's going forward, we don't have a dollar amount for it. There is no dollar amount established. You would have to get bids from someone and decide on what you want for structures or whatever until we can get an exact dollar amount. There is no way to set an exact dollar amount at this time.
So that's why we're doing it, is to get an exact dollar amount, and then we'll vote whether we want it or not?
We'll discuss the vote a little bit later, but in order to come up with any plans or anything else, we have to retain people to give us those numbers.
And so I'll piggyback off Scott just a little bit here because the board did vote to move forward with the project. We will talk about the vote, we're gonna talk about the petition, but as far as the construction manager at risk, we would have to, like Scott said, have somebody that would be able to give us bids so that we know what budget is so that we can actually issue the capitalization certificates. No capitalization certificates have been issued yet. We've had a number of contractors come forward and expect, express desire to bid on this project, and until we get somebody that's going to manage it and get those numbers, we won't know what the total cost is. So that's why we have to have that person in place. And that's why we're going with the construction manager at risk because they can use local contractors better. What else do you have? Anything they want to add?
I do have one more question. Okay. So is this person, if the decision is made to put it out north, does, is, what is this person, what is this person gonna do? Are they gonna bid by the slough? Or are they gonna bid by out north? Or how are they gonna know what to even bid?
Scott, I'll answer that if you want.
I would say we would probably want to get numbers here.
Why?
Because that's the land that we're purchasing.
Why?
Why? Exactly why?
So we have no more land here at the school. And I've, and I'm not trying to argue or anything else, I'm just talking here. What? One of the biggest concerns that I've heard is parking issue. If we purchase more land, we will have an area to park. I don't think anybody can disagree with that. So if we have more land, we can't park there? I'm just...
How is that the best spot, though? I don't, that's my question.
So actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop because this is actually just comments related to whether or not we're gonna hire a construction manager at risk.
That's what we're trying to do.
I understand that, but... That's what we're discussing right now, is whether or not to hire the construction manager at risk. So if you have questions about that, then I would...
Why do we want a construction manager if we haven't even voted that where we want this? Why do we have to get the construction manager before we vote?
Well, in order to have the project with the board already approved at the last board meeting, we would have to get some sort of numbers on what the project's gonna cost.
But why do we care about the cost if we don't know the location?
I would argue that most taxpayers would be concerned about the cost of the project. I'm not saying that's the only concern.
And do you have the vote of the people if they don't want it?
That's another question that...
Yeah, that's a big question.
And we will discuss that when we get to the petition. Yes, ma'am.
But isn't part of this cost you're talking about, the cost of the parcel of land, which seems to have already been spent? I'm a little confused about that. We're discussing two locations. Isn't it part of this whole cost discussion and estimates for building, ultimately the total cross of, cost of the project depend on also the parcel of land's cost? So that's where I think people start to get confused. You've already spent, it sounds like, the cost for the parcel of land just by your league. So I think that's where you're getting a lot of confusion about this.
And the more we get into it, the more confusing it gets as far as project costs, capitalization certificates, and the whole process.
I think most of us understand how construction works in general.
I'm not saying construction in general, I'm just saying codified law and what, you know, the board is, what's applicable to what the board can and can't.
So that means you can purchase a piece of land on your own and not purchase land to the north, so there's really no decision? That's where people are getting confused, I think. It sounds like this is a done deal, the property's purchased, done. That's what it sounds like to people.
We're in the middle of the process of purchasing it. Later on, there will be an approval for a purchase agreement that the board has to approve if the board wants to purchase the land.
So do you see the problem people are having wrapping their head around this discussion?
So is the north not viable somehow? Is that what you're saying?
Pretty much.
Not viable.
Okay. So that means the decision's already been made.
Right. Okay.
Well, we're looking to buy this land. I don't think there's any decision been made by the board that I'm aware of as far as what's gonna go on to it, to what extent, or any of that. And I do, like, not to pull out, pick on certain people, but I do get the whole, we don't know how much it's gonna cost or whatever, because the board has not decided what is gonna go on that property. I mean...
So why would you buy it?
Because we need room for things. I mean, you know, whether something gets moved there, a park...
I have 18 acres you can buy. I got 18 acres of room for you.
I have no idea where you're going.
I know, but that's where people have the problem of why are you selecting that parcel in particular? That's where people are having a problem.
I would say when we looked at the negotiations parts, as far as the different proposals, the number one thing is it's 200 feet away from the school.
And it's right by the busiest, most dangerous highway in South Dakota. How many high school students will you have to have?
We're getting half track on the construction manager at risk discussion.
Yep, well, bear it in mind, folks. County high school students.
Okay. We're gonna bring it back. Does anybody have any other comments on the construction manager at risk issue?
Okay, I have one question. So I work in construction, so I understand the whole you have to have a bid to know where things can fit, how much it's gonna cost. I think the biggest question is, since you already bought the land, which is, I understand you have to move, I'm all for, I think most of us are for a new complex, just not that location. So when you get a bidder, are you gonna have them bid at just that location or more than one location so the community can decide what would be best for, one, the cost, two, what construction company you're gonna go with, and three, what's gonna go there? I think that's the big question of, is it just gonna be this one location because that's what's been decided, maybe not publicly, or, you know, together as a group of personally? Or is it gonna be more than just that spot of two or three or four different locations? Which obviously costs more money to have more bids be done, but I think that's the biggest question that people are wondering.
Sure. Scott, did you wanna, I know you talked to the contractor before.
I guess the, I would urge the board to look to see what the total cost would be over there before pursuing alternative locations. Just on the overall price. I mean, there are...
So there'd be no comparison then?
As far as what?
Of the bids. No comparison of bids of location, and is that only because the land's already been purchased?
The land hasn't been purchased yet.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not trying to go, you know, say...
No, 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 no.
It's in the process, I just wanna make sure so someone doesn't say you've already bought it. But I mean, that is the technical term, I mean, we're in the process of buying it, okay? Yes.
Help, the clarification. Is your purchase agreement on the table, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's in the packet here.
I'm sorry, I came late.
No, no, you're fine.
So I, I was at the last meeting, and since the last meeting, I talked to two board members, and they both indicated that a location has not been determined, but yet we're voting on the land. That doesn't make sense to me.
So this doesn't really have to do with construction manager at risk, again, but there is already a purchase agreement. And six months ago, the board decided to move forward with negotiating on two different parcels of land. And through those negotiations, we decided to purchase the land to the east of the school. That has happened over about a six-month period. So tonight, we're going to approve the land purchase agreement, and there will be a little more discussion on why we are purchasing that parcel over the other parcel. So that may answer some of those questions.
So the location has been decided?
Just the land has been decided.
Doesn't that basically mean the same thing?
Someone wanted to open their pocketbook and write a big check.
I know people will donate north, but they won't there. I just talked to somebody this weekend.
Any other comments on the construction manager at risk?
I don't see why we need a construction manager until you decide on where's the location.
And what you're building.
Well, this goes back to a little bit, kind of, I'm gonna go back to Bart's comments, that the board does have four to choose projects up to a certain amount of money, and we won't have to vote on those. So we haven't made those decisions yet, and we will definitely get input when we do make those decisions, but we are moving forward with the project. That was put on last month. Okay. Any other comments on construction manager at risk?
Scott, you did say that you're gonna purchase the land, but you don't know what's gonna go there yet.
I don't, and there hasn't been...
Why didn't we receive a survey then with a drawing on it that shows the complex there?
That was ju, they put a complex on it.
It was totally skewed survey, it meant nothing. Sorry. That's...
We're on topic, so I'm gonna close the public hearing on the construction manager at risk, and then I'm actually gonna go back to item seven, which is where we left off, which is the consent agenda. And unless anybody would like to pull one of the consent items for further discussion.
Before you go on, item four, it's listed in here, acceptance of resignation of Luann Smith, business manager. Luann will actually be retiring at the end of the school year. She gave me a letter to read. Dear school board, this is my official letter of retirement, Home and Even School District, business manager, at the end of fiscal year '26, as of June 30th, 2026. This career as business manager for the district has been an adventure, to say the least. It's had its challenges to expect the unexpected and has also provided many rewards. Been grateful to have had the opportunity to serve in this position for the Home and Even School and to have worked with a great number of staff, administrators, and board members. My goal has always been to do the best that I could for the district and its future, and I hope I have done that. Thank you for allowing me to have a great career with Home and Even School District and wish you all the best and your continued success for the district's future. Go Hawks. Sincerely, Luann Smith. So thank you, Luann.
Yeah. As Dan said, we saw Joe prove this. Right now, the year or two.
I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, aye? Oppose, aye? Thank you, Luann. Approval of additional bills that may come in, and I believe there are some on the table.
There's two sheets.
They generate water bottles for basketball, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Boys and girls this time?
Boys and girls, yes.
Yeah. So they won't be sharing water bottles this year.
There's any question, any other questions on the bills? Otherwise, I need a motion to approve additional bills as presented. Make a motion. All those in favor, aye? Oppose, aye? Motion carries. Second reading on the waitroom use policy.
So I think I've made the changes that were recommended at the last meeting. Put something in about the fobs have to return, must remain in that area, failure to comply may result in privileges being revoked. We also did, the membership cost $50 per person or family. We did add in the event a fob is lost and the fobs can be issued, that cost of $20. That was not in there before. And then it basically does say that this can change at any time, so, I mean, it's gonna be a fluid thing. Other schools that offer it to their public, you know, I assume they change it as they go. Anyway, we would look to probably open this up. It's up to you guys if we wanna open it the week of January 5th, or if you'd wanna open it after the next board meeting on January 12th. I have had a lot of interest from people in the community wanting to, you know, utilize the area, so... Anyway.
Did you? I'm sorry. Go ahead, finish.
No, I have nothing.
Oh. Did you run this by Rodney?
I have not sent him this copy. I can send him this copy, though. This is basically stolen from other school districts, so I will do that.
My other thought is, do we want to start maybe with fewer hours and then expand them rather than so many hours? Just to see how it goes, and if we don't, as, maybe as, as it grows, that we can add more hours?
I don't, you know.
I don't know, I'm just, just asking.
If I'm reading this right, it's from 4:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. This is when school is in session, and then 6:30 p.m. to midnight. And then did you add, I didn't, I did not get this part.
You're thinking that, like, in the nighttime? Shut down at 10:00 or something?
No, no, I was looking at the weekend hours. If you've got things going on in the morning here, but I know that that's got their own entrance. Did you put anything about children? I know that was another comment.
Basically, it says members must remain in the waitroom.
And you cannot allow non-members?
Cannot let non-members in. I'm not seeing that down there. That is some, I mean, you can add, again, that's subject to change at any time, if there's a specific line, you know.
Yeah, I just, I just think you just, you just can't have your kids running around waitroom when there's adults trying to work out. I guess I don't see any reason not to implement it, and you can add in children after 18 must be accompanied by adults.
I guess I would...
I don't even think they should. Should be in there. No. Because, I mean, how do you, that's, how do you watch your three-year-old when you're...
So I guess the question would be, do we wanna look at putting a minimum age on there?
Thinking.
I'm just saying, if you have, if you have 14-year-old kids that come in left in the morning, if they wanna come up to you on the weekend.
That's what I'm wondering, do we need to run it by Rodney? Because there's, essentially, are students.
Cause there's essentially our student.
Yeah, cause it looks like the way it is now, like if the member is the adult that is at least eighteen years and out of high school, is a district resident or taxpayer. So if they're not eighteen, they're not going to be a member, but.
Yeah, let's push it to the, for the January meeting pending and then it will probably go into effect immediately, I would say after that meeting if it's approved. So then the next item would be approve the resolution for the CMAR usage and that is attached to the back. The resolution is. And then we'll just re-advertise that and those will be due in January, right, Scott?
Yeah. If you go forward with it.
Okay, so I am motion to approve the resolution for CMAR usage. Make a motion. For a second. All those in favor, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, discussion on petition submittal. And I know it was requested that Scott read the letter that was submitted with the petitions. I have the petitions here, so I'll pass these around for the board members to look at. And then we will open it up to, after the board has discussed, we will open it up to discussion. Some people wanted to speak on just this issue, so it'll just be limited to the same as what was at the beginning and then.
All right, here was the letter that was turned in with the petitions. Dear, well, Coman Even School Board, enclosed you will find one hundred and twenty-five signatures of your friends, neighbors and family members, which represents eleven percent of the total registered voters, one thousand one hundred and fifty-three in the district. Although we may be premature with our petitions as far as the state law is concerned, we as taxpaying citizens disagree. There's already been thousands of dollars authorized to be spent on drilling, site surveys and now hiring ISG for pre-construction work at the cost of thirty-nine thousand five hundred. On top of all that, a draft purchase agreement for land has been authorized, so to us, it is definitely not premature. Please take these petitions calling for an election seriously. You have the authority to hold an election all on your own without a law requiring you to do so. If you choose to listen to lawyers and ignore our petitions, do you really think that will change the outcome? We assure you, we are driven to have a voice and not leave a four-point-five million dollar decision up to three individuals. An election is the only solution and if we must, we will petition again. The school board is supposed to represent the people of this community and we have one hundred and twenty-five signatures that say your community would like to vote on it. Are you really going to deny us all that right because of some technicality? And then this, it was signed respectfully, Laura and Charlie Zort, Mike Gingler and Mary Sweeney Gingler and Michelle Teney. So that is the letter that was brought with the petitions.
And so we have had, we talked about this at the last meeting, but Scott has reached out to our school attorney, to legislative council for the Department of Education, to the state's attorney, to a number of superintendents who have different council, than our school council, and to also DA Davidson and to ISG, who works with schools on numerous projects. Basically, everyone was unanimous in their conclusion. And Rodney did write a letter to Scott and I for the board, so I'll just have you read his response on that.
Okay. So here was the response from the school attorney Rodney Freeman, in issue to the petitions. Superintendent Tanner, it corresponded on this topic on numerous occasions. Based upon our conversations this morning, you agreed that it would be best for me to send to you and Board of Education a brief synopsis for various conversations since there seems to be confusion and/or misinformation in the community. As I'm sure you and the board are aware, SDCL thirteen sixteen six point two is the statute that authorizes the issuance of capital outlay certificates. That statute provides any proposed issue of capital outlay certificates shall obligate the school district for future payments of the principal, which the total will exceed one and a half percent of the taxable property within the district, cannot be entered into the school district through certificates issued unless prior there to the board conducts a public hearing, thereon after giving notice in local publication ten days before the hearing. It is my understanding that the capital outlay certificates contemplated by the board do not exceed one point five percent of the value of taxable property within the district and that at the school dis- the school board voluntarily held a public hearing. The other statute I want you to address or want to address, since I have reviewed the petitions that were presented to the school last week, again, it's SDCL thirteen dash sixteen dash six point two. The statute provides, when read in conjunction with SDCL thirteen sixteen six point four, that if capital outlay certificates authorized by the board do not exceed one point five percent, then no election may be held. The statute is very explicit. While I'm aware that the petitions submitted by some of the patrons in the district wish the board to hold an election even if, even if one is not required by the statute, SDCLA thirteen sixteen six point two, in my legal opinion prohibits the district from holding an election even if the Board of Election, Board of Education wished to do so. Again, this is prohibition and thus the Board of Education has no choice as to a vote since the same is directly and specifically prohibited by state law. Thank you, Rodney Freeman. So that is his take on.
And I think too, some of the confusion is the project cost versus capital outlay certificate, basically outlays. And it's not the total cost of the project that exceeds the one point five percent, it's what capital outlay certificates are issued. So it's my understanding, Scott, from talking to you, that the school's not looking at, if the cost of the project is four point five million, we're only looking at issuing three point five million-ish in capital outlay certificates by using cash on hand or donations or other funding sources.
And the way I have it, it's been explained to me, is if the district wanted to issue certificates in excess of one point five. So say there was a project and you wanted to go one point seven. The district at that point could voluntarily say, we're gonna vote on it, that amount. Or if the, if the board says, no, we don't wanna vote on it, then it could be referred. At that point, if it's voted down, no certificates would be issued. However, the board can issue certificates in the amount up to one point five for any project that they wanna move forward with or see fit to conduct within the district. So that is, that is the way the codified law is written.
And Mary, I know that you didn't wanna speak on this topic, so yes, I'll open the floor to you.
Okay, so after we turned in our referendum petition with the one hundred and twenty-five signatures, over twice the required number, and as an indication of what the public is thinking besides the board here, we were told to talk to Rod Fortin, the South Dakota Legislative Auditor. Laura explained to him, the three of us were in a conversation with this gentleman for about half an hour. He explained that she had talked to legislators and the Legislative Research Council and they agreed in our case that we should be able to have an election. Rod said he can't give a legal opinion, but said if asked, two different attorneys could have different opinions. She asked that, why shouldn't we err on the side of the people? He said the verbiage was changed the last time in nineteen eighty-nine and maybe should be changed to be more clear. He also said, we should talk directly to the board members to ensure that a resolution doesn't pass. And that's what I did, I talked to several of the board members. Anyway, today Laura was able to contact Representative John Hanson regarding having an election. He said, we need a statement from the lawyer, I'd like a copy of that if I could get that, please, as to what statute we are operating under. He also said that per statute thirteen dash sixteen dash six dot three, the board does have the authority to call for an election, not require, but can. That was what Representative John Hanson said, he is an attorney.
I, I would like to just make a comment on that. Six point three states that if it is over one point five percent, that there can be an election. It's confusing with codified law, I'm not trying to, I'm not an attorney, but that's, that's what that states.
Goes to different opinions, cause I've read it over and over again and you can see it both ways. And obviously, so can Representative John Hanson and he is a lawyer. So yeah, I would, if that's okay, I would like a copy of the letter from our lawyer.
Oh, so basically, based on all of the discussions that we had, I mean, there's, this isn't an action and this is just a discussion for the board. That it's, it's my opinion and my, I would do my recommendation that we follow our attorney's advice and recommendation in not having an election. One, that because no capital outlay certificates have even been issued, so there is nothing to refer, to a vote. And two, because we're under the one point five percent of the total evaluation, which it will prohibit if I say that after the week. Do you guys have any questions on the odds? Gary Young, I will move on.
What is the one point five percent?
So as of this month, the one point five percent is roughly five point one million. And then next, in January, it moves to five point four million, just with the difference in valuations.
Can we move on to item thirteen, which is take action to advertise for the construction manager at risk RFQ and establish criteria for receiving proposals?
So the advertisement for the RFQs is updated in the package. I guess the one thing you'd wanna look at doing is figuring out how you wanna receive those proposals. Keep in mind, those are typically percentages of work and whatever. As of now, they are due on January seventh. Been talking to ISG and different construction companies that have reached out. It seems like it's commonplace for the board to appoint two people to review those and possibly myself and then bring recommendations for retaining one of those people at the board meeting, so you don't have to go through all of them at the board meeting. But it's up to the board however they would want to look at receiving those.
Does that get enough, give enough time, two holidays in there?
Well, you have to advertise it for ten days before they are due.
And it has been advertised already.
We did advertise it and there were numerous submissions already for the first one. However, those would be put away.
Resubmitted.
Correct.
Okay. I can't, I know you're super busy, but.
I know, but you're good at looking at those kinds of things with two people.
My only question is what I would have to recuse myself if you put in. Yes, you probably would, so I probably would not have you do that. So what if we do Dan and Jen, would you guys be willing to look at those with Scott? And then I would just be a motion to advertise for the construction manager at risk and that we would receive those with Jen and Dan and Scott reviewing before the next board meeting. And you have given that now, cause we haven't done that yet, but if there would be any vote on the submittals, then we would, you would have to recuse yourself then. Chris, good. All those in favor, aye. Opposed, aye. Motion carries. All right, item fourteen, take action on dissolving of curate's education co-op.
All right, so as Jen talked about before, the member schools are looking at possibly dissolving the co-op. With Flanders getting out of the co-op, it's gonna increase every school's cost within it. And if another school gets out, it's gonna be significantly higher with that. So at our last meeting, the superintendents did discuss dissolving the co-op itself. Basically, the two main functions, our co-op directors in attendance tonight, and if I get this wrong, you can tell me later, but. They provide school psych services to the, to the member schools and then also they help with Medicaid reimbursement, which we are not affected as much as the other schools with, with higher enrollments, as far as that goes.
How many Medicaid reimbursements did you file?
Very few.
Yeah. Probably less than.
I mean, just single digits the number. I do know in discussions that we had at the directors meeting, I know some of the schools are just gonna forego the reimbursement because the amount you get back is, you know, could be so little for those districts. We are the smallest school in the, in the co-op.
How would we get our psych services?
I'm sorry, what?
How would we get our psych services?
So we would look, so currently, we share services with Tri Valley School in the co-op. Tri Valley has not expressed an interest of needing more days for the school psych. Our first recourse would be to work with Tri Valley School District to retain our days. We are currently, I think we received twenty-five days of school psych services, so. That would be the option and here's the deal, if they dissolve that we, you know, there's no really, there's no real choice. However, in talking to the other superintendents, it's kind of a, we're all on board or not because if, if any more schools get out before the deadline, then the cost to all the other schools is gonna go up significantly, so. Every superintendent's having the same discussion with their board tonight, as far as whether to get out, I mean, to dissolve, sorry, not to get out, but to dissolve the co-op.
Is that something that we need to take action on tonight or will we take action after your superintending?
I think we need to have it by our January board meeting, correct? That's the way I understood it, so. And keep in mind too, it takes a seventy-five percent vote to dissolve, so you're looking at seven schools who have to take actions, so.
Cause we would. What I have written here is we would vote at our meeting in January and then it has to be sent to PLEC on or before February fifteenth.
It's either February fifteenth or February first, but I, I will double check, we have a meeting on Friday.
What would be your recommendation for us then?
Based on the meeting that we had, I think the, the member schools would look to dissolve just because they could manage their costs differently, if you will. I think it was very cost-effective when we had ninety schools in there, but once you get down to eight or seven, whatever they're paying, and I think each district pays anywhere from eight to thirteen thousand a year in administrative costs and other things, so as every school gets out, that would be absorbed by the other member schools, so. That, that's why everyone said, nobody's gonna jump ship and everybody, you know, the other schools are gonna be sitting there paying that for a year, so it's, we'll find out what the policy is more on Friday.
So do we need to vote on dissolving tonight?
I don't, I think we can, but just, so you're aware.
All right. Any other questions on the PLEC? All right. Approval of land purchase agreement.
So the land purchase agreement is in your package, turn the two pages. So, the land purchase agreement is in your packet, turn the two pages. When you did establish, the board gave Kirsten rights to sign any and all documents, but they had to come before the board to be approved. So in that, the final plat of land is ten point four acres. The full purchase price for the property is one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. So if you break it down per acre, it's roughly seventeen thousand, one hundred and fifty per acre, is what the purchase price would be.
So let's talk just a little bit about how we got to that purchase agreement, cause I feel like that's the, everyone's kind of big question. And to Scott's point, when we talked about this at the beginning, and take everyone back, we started this negotiation process, and it was a competitive mid situation where we had multiple landowners, and. So we authorized Melissa and myself, for the negotiating team with Scott, to work with the landowners. And when we met with the landowners, it was, they were very different. One, the landowner to the north, they asked us to keep, you know, that their stuff confidential, so I'm not going to divulge all that information right now, but I will say that the price was. Significantly higher for the land itself, and then there were a number of stipulations that were attached to that land, for any building project that would be done there. That would, that would increase the costs by. Easily one and a half to two million dollars, and I don't even know if they were all feasible to even, for us to even meet some of the stipulations. So, when we met with Bob Leese, cause now, over here. There was zero stipulations on anything, and the price was, like I said, about half of what the other price was. So, given those things, we did have, who was it that did the soil samples?
Geotech did.
They had Geotech come and do that, because to everyone's point, if, if the cost was gonna be higher, one or the other, but then the cost of development was gonna be way higher to offset that, we wanted to know that upfront. That came back, basically, the, it's very similar at both sites.
It was, the, the findings from those were that the soils over here were more suitable to build on than the soils at the north site. The north site, actually, the soil samples that they had there actually contained more moisture, so there would be concerns of the length of construction time there. And then the north site also had more variance on elevation, which led Geotech to believe that the cost to get that to grade, as opposed to this, would be significantly higher at the north site.
And that did not include the stipulations that we were also gonna have to meet, so that was on top of all of those other costs. So that's basically, and then in talking with coaches, teachers, staff. This, the east site is just much more convenient for the school to use, some of those things. So that is how we ended up with this purchase agreement, which is in the packet, so everyone can have a copy of it. So yes, right now, all I need is a motion to approve the purchase agreement. Motion?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
This is not said in stone, this is not not saying that we're going to put the athletic complex.
No, this is just for the purchase of the land. Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, aye? Oppose, nay? Motion carries. And item sixteen, establish the school board election date.
With that, I think the June second date is gonna be more beneficial to the board, cause then we have the new board members sworn in at our July board meeting, so.
What was the other?
November's, twenty-fourth, I believe, I think. Something like that, no, November seventh, first, second week.
And then the new board member would also have the opportunity to attend the board meeting before their.
Correctly. Yeah. So we just need to set the new election date for June second?
June second.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, the next meeting is scheduled for January eighth. Is there basketball meeting on that day? I don't have, I don't have basketball schedules being formed.
I believe it should be January twelfth.
Oh, January twelfth? Anyway, let's go.
Seventy-nine versus Flandre, you know, that's either there.
Or Wednesday. So we do Wednesday, fourteenth? Does that work? Scott?
I don't think there's anything, January twelfth, boys' basketball. I don't see anything on the fourteenth.
Okay. We will do the next regular meeting for Wednesday, January fourteenth, at six PM in the library. I just need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, aye? All those nay? Motion carries. Thank you all for attending.
I have one question. You say it's significant higher, how much higher are you saying significantly? I like the. I mean, I don't.